Good to go. All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this Wednesday, June 11th, 2025, regular board meeting of the Pullman Public Schools Board of Directors. We will begin with the flag salute. Ms. Amanda Tanner, will you please lead us in the flag salute?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the reprieve and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, next, I'd like to read our land acknowledgement statement. Pullman Public Schools reside on the homelands of the Nimmipunnez-Purse people. We express our deepest respect for and gratitudes towards the original and current stewards of this land, and we acknowledge our role in building mutual respect and connections to support current and future generations. Next is approval of the agenda. Dr. Maxwell, are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
Yeah, a couple additions, just to make note of. You should have received prior notice to this. LMS student ambassador not presenting due to Silverwood apparently took precedence.
That's understandable.
So, sorry about that, but we will rearrange their schedules. Also, consent agenda, just some personnel reports, overnight field trip requests, informational items added, highly capable program, board calendar revision, and then added legal counsel discussion and exec session.
Okay, perfect.
Those are all the additions.
Got to entertain a motion.
I move approval of the agenda as amended.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda as amended. Are there any questions on the motion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion passes. Next, we'll go to reports correspondence and programs, and we would begin with the PHS ASB reports. I'd like to ask Connor, come up.
Good evening.
Hi, everyone. My name is Connor Scholes, and I am here for Pullman High ASB. So as the year wraps up, we're beginning to settle into our positions in next year's ASB as our previous years, as this current year's ASB ended on last Friday. And this means that usually this would be where I would introduce the new person that's going to be talking to you guys for next year. But for next year, I was re-elypting that position, and so I'll be back next year through next school year. And then next, sticking with the theme of settling next year's ASB positions, after school yesterday, we met with most of our new class officers and got to know each other, did some team-building stuff, and just went over what the positions are, what the duties of positions are. And then, we're really looking forward to the next year. I mean, I really think that's just about it, just wrapping up the year.
Any questions or comments?
We look forward to seeing you next year.
Yeah, congratulations, by the way, and yeah, look forward to next year. Thanks, Connor.
I mean, excited about your new year.
All right, next, we'll move to board reports, and I'll begin with Craig Nelson.
Well, we've had a nice couple of weeks here. Attended the senior walk-through at Jefferson Elementary School, got to see some old students when I was there, walk-through in their regalia, which was very fun, very nice to touch bases with, not only the students, but a lot of parents were there, so to touch base with a lot of parents as well. As the year closes up, just want to extend a thank you to all of the teachers, parapros, custodians, bus drivers, everybody that makes the district run and provide opportunities for success for the students. And so just thank you to everyone that has a hand in preparing these kids for their future.
All right, thank you, Craig. Lisa?
Yeah, I also have been able to take part in some of the end-of-the-school-year festivities, which have been really great. Really appreciative to all the work that everybody's put in. Jefferson Elementary had their end-of-school-year celebration a week ago. It was very well attended, there was great weather, there was pizza and other food that families contributed, so that was a really great event. And I was also really glad to be able to make it to graduation. Both of those events, I was especially grateful to be able to make it to because I wasn't able to make it to our last board meeting, and I thought I would just address that briefly since there have been some general questions about, like, what happens when board members can't be at meetings. I was super sick. I've never been so sick in my life. I had a terrible fever, I was pretty delirious, and ended up in the hospital for emergency abdominal surgery, which was unrelated to the pneumonia I also had in both lungs. So it was very efficient. I was just very sick for one week. But I did want to point out that when that happens, we usually just notify both the superintendent and the board president. I was really encouraged, there were efforts made, you know, that I could call in if that was possible. In this case, it really wasn't because I was not thinking clearly. But I did get to watch, and I'm really glad that we're able to livestream all these meetings for people who can't be here in the room with us and record them for watching later, which I also did back after I was thinking clearly again. And I also looked up, you know, I think one, in general, this has been kind of eye-opening for me being on the board now that it's been about a year, that I think there's often a lot of questions about why people aren't around, not just the board, and like, now that I know more about that personnel stuff, like, it's basically always like health and family, like, it's just the same things that we all go through. And, you know, I appreciate, no one really asked me about it, but I appreciate that people have different levels of comfort with transparency about those kinds of personal things, and I appreciate when the community, you know, extends grace to everyone in the district when that happens. I also looked up all of our operating policies related to quorum and absences, just because there have been some questions about, like, what happens when board members aren't here. And I'm just going to read them all. There's a whole bunch of them, actually. So, the first one is in our very, it's in like our key board policies. Board Policy 1101, Board Operating Principles, and it says, "Prior to the meeting, a member should notify the president or superintendent if a board member knows they will be absent." I think we all do that routinely, usually both. There's also Board Policy 1220, Board Officers and Duties of Board Members. Each member is obligated to attend board meetings regularly. Whenever possible, each director will give advance notice to the president or superintendent of their inability to attend a board meeting. A majority of the board may excuse a director's absence from a meeting if requested to do so. The board may declare a board member's position vacant after four consecutive unexcused absences from regular board meetings." Fortunately, I don't think that has come up anytime recently. There's also Board Policy 1450, Absence of a Board Member. The Pullman School District Board of Directors shall, whenever possible, give advance notice to the chairman or superintendent of his/her inability to attend a board meeting. Actually, I wonder if we should change that from chairman to president as a small amendment that I might recommend later.
They're usually used interchangeably.
Yeah. "A majority of the board may excuse a board member's absence from a meeting if requested to do so. The board may declare a board member's position vacant after four consecutive unexcused absences from regular board meetings. If the absences were for reasons other than, one, illness; two, active or training military duty; three, religious observance; four, official board business; five, situations covered by the Family Medical Leave Act; or six, those authorized by resolution of the board." There's additional information in that one also about people who are serving in the military, which I think was, is great to have on the record. There's also questions about quorum. So, Board Policy 1400, Meeting Conduct, Order of Business and Quorum, Quorum and Voting. A quorum consists of the majority of all board members. Three board members will be considered as constituting a quorum for the transaction of business. A quorum is required for the transaction of business, including voting. Board members are not required to be physically present to attend a board meeting. Any or all board members may attend a board meeting and vote via any communication platform that provides real-time verbal communication without being in the same physical location with those in attendance, which we do fairly often to accommodate folks when they're traveling. And that one is also reinforced, we actually go a little bit farther in our policy, but that's also in state law in RCW 28A, 343, 390, which a lot of our policies are based on state model policies or actual state law, so we only have so much flexibility there anyway. But it says, "A majority of all members of the Board of Directors shall constitute a quorum. Absence of any board member from four consecutive regular meetings of the board unless on account of sickness or authorized by resolution of the board shall be sufficient cause for the remaining members of the board to declare by resolution that such board member position is vacated." So I think there's probably like more, because I think I mostly just want to emphasize, like, we have a lot of really thorough policies that cover a lot of this, and, you know, I teach at WSU, so a lot of this is kind of like going back to the syllabus whenever these things come up and making sure you've actually read everything that is there. And I did, see, and this one is actually kind of a question I had, it hasn't come up for us, and, but it does seem like there are a few instances where we're required to have everybody voting on things, and that is for hiring a superintendent or voting on our own board officers, which we have a rotation for. So, that was interesting to me, and that I would share that since there's been some curiosity around it. That's it.
Thank you very much, Lisa.
Yep.
It's very informative. It's always great to catch up on policies, just to make sure that we're, you know, following what we pass, so. All right, Aaron, please go.
Yeah, just the same, a lot of end-of-year activities that have been going on. We had a great graduation. Sorry we missed you, but I know you were ill as well. But yeah, a great, great event there celebrating the students, and like Craig, just like to thank everybody in the districts, you know, teachers, paras, staff, everybody for making another great, successful year, and wish everyone the happiest of summers, and we'll see you all again in August.
It's always so quick.
I know.
Go ahead.
No, we're clear.
All right, and I have no report this evening either, and so we'll move straight to superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Just a couple, couple things. Again, graduation was a big success, and awards night, and each elementary is having activities, end of the year, middle school, so good wrap-up to the end of the year, a lot of, lot of activities last week of school. And so that's quickly nearing an end, and again, big thank you to everyone. At this point, I would like to introduce some folks that'll be taking some positions. I'd like to invite up Ryan Mulvey. Ryan, if you could come up. So, Ryan Mulvey, you approved his hire at the last board meeting, so Ryan Mulvey will be the new assistant superintendent, and I've asked Ryan, as our tradition, to say a few words to the board. So, Ryan, take it over.
Hi, hi. Nice to meet you all in person. Thank you for approving that position and the work that you do for the Pullman School District. Just a little bit about me. Last 11 years, I've been at West Valley High School, seven as the principal, and four before that as the assistant principal. I did my superintendent internship through WSU through Dr. Gene Semeni of West Valley, and he's well-known, renowned around the state for advocating for smaller districts with legislature, so I learned a lot through him. My fiancee and I are really excited to be heading to Pullman and to serve the community here. We've already secured a place for a living and purchased a plot of land, so we are here for the long haul. And so, I get, I look forward to getting to know all of you, as well as everyone in the district over the next, hopefully, long career. Thank you.
Well, Ryan, I'd just like to say first, congratulations and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Happy to have you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Absolutely. Okay, so want to say anything? Any questions? Okay, thanks, Ryan.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I would also like to invite up Evan Hecker, who will be assuming PHS Assistant Principal/Activities Athletics Director.
Thank you, Evan.
Thank you, school board. I actually prepared something real quick. This has been hard, but good evening, everybody. It's an honor to be with you tonight. As the founding principal of Cameac Elementary, I've had the incredible privilege of helping build something truly special from the ground up, a professional learning community rooted in connection, curiosity, and care. One of the most rewarding experiences of my career has been watching our students grow from curious kindergartners to confident learners, a journey that was profoundly recognized, or sorry, proudly recognized when Cameac was named a Washington State Distinguished School by OSPI this year. Now, as I transition into my new role in the restructured position as Assistant Principal and Activities Athletic Director at Pullman High School, I feel both grateful and excited. This next chapter gives me the opportunity to continue serving students, staff, and families, this time through the dynamic arenas of academics, athletics, the arts, and co-curricular involvement. I look forward to promoting student voice, school spirit, and a strong sense of belonging at PHS. Thank you to the Cameac community for your trust and support. And the Pullman High team, I'm eager to begin this new journey. It's always a great day to be a Greyhound. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Evan.
Thank you.
Okay, are you done with your report?
Yep, that concludes our report.
Perfect, thank you very much. We'll move to program reports, and I'd like to ask Justin Polstet up for safety. I'm just going to say safety.
Incumbrance piece as well?
Yes.
Property piece first, okay. So before we get to the safety report, just want to touch base. At our last meeting, when we did the public hearing, there were a few questions and concerns that came up from the community, and just wanted to give some insight into those comments. So, from the public hearing, an initial concern was if this doesn't go through and the loss of the pool for our kids and community and what that impact would look like. There was an example given of what has happened over in Moscow with the pool equipment, and just there was that concern of, what if this doesn't go through? And just want to reiterate that everybody on board is really positive with what is happening and doing a good job to help make this move forward. I'd like to reiterate what Eric Newman from SEL shared, as far as how this is, this is good for our kids, this is good for our schools, this is good for our elderly community, and good for Pullman overall. And we're going to work to make sure that this happens and happens appropriately. And SEL plans to continue, I want to reiterate this as well, SEL plans to continue to offer the programs that we currently have in place. Okay, so hopefully it's a smooth transition, so anyone in the community that uses the facility won't notice anything in six months or a year from now. It just continues on, and it's, and it's smooth, and it's, and it's an appropriate use for our, for our folks in our community. So, that was one. Another one was, there was a concern about the encumbrance was brought forth, and how selling the property could be a burden on the district. So just a quick reminder on the encumbrance, so the property that we are looking to sell was funded partially in Military Hill Park back in 1970. And so when that happened, there was an encumbrance that came along with that, that basically says, anytime if you sell any of that property that was funded by the federal government, we then have to replace that equitable amount of property somewhere else. Okay? And so with that, when this property is sold, we then have to replace, let's say we sell it for a million dollars, we have to then replace that million dollars' worth of property somewhere else as outdoor recreation land. Okay? And so there was a concern that that might be a burden on the, on the school district for having to do that. And I really think, working with the teams that we've worked with, with the city and with SEL, that this situation actually gives the school district a unique opportunity to partner with the city and other groups in our community, to create a space that is beneficial for the entire community. There may be potential grants that we could partner with, with the city or other groups. And as a district, we need to welcome this opportunity to build relationships with the city and our community and work to move this forward, because, again, this will be good for all of our folks. Okay? Another concern that was brought up was the idea of a long-term commercial lease that was proposed to avoid the encumbrance. And this approach was discussed collaboratively between Pullman School District and SEL several months ago. And from the beginning, SEL has expressed a clear and consistent preference to own the property and the building. They've been very clear with that. And it, what they're sharing is an interest that reflects their long-term investment in the community, in Pullman. For the school district, that building could become a liability for us if we were to hold on to it for long time. There's a lot of work that needs to be done to it, a lot of work. And if SEL is willing to come in and help us with that, that removes that potential liability. We greatly respect SEL's position and look forward to continuing to work together towards a solution that best serves our entire community with this project. There was also a concern about maintaining the land that will be purchased. So if we end up purchasing land that's going to be used for outdoor rec, somehow it needs to be taken care of. We have a lot of partnerships in the community to potentially work with, to help maintain the future outdoor rec land that we're looking to purchase. One example's Phoenix Inservency, they do a lot of work with us already, and they've been phenomenal to work with. They've contributed to a lot of our work on our campuses, they've worked with our students, they help maintain land, and they've done a lot to reintroduce native plant species as well back into, to the area. But other things, you know, United Way, WSU, other community groups. We had a community group that reached out to me a few weeks ago, two months ago, that wanted to do some work to support the school district. And they, they brought in, I think, 30-plus students and came to the high school and did weeding and small projects, and just, there are folks out there that want to help and make things work to better our community. So we will find folks, we will do things to make sure that we're moving this forward. So lastly, Pullman Schools sees the sale of the Aquatic Center as a unique opportunity to create partnerships and provide improvements for our community. Meeting with the city tomorrow to discuss their recent survey about future park needs and improvements. And once this sale is finalized, we will have three years to thoughtfully plan and purchase land and implement improvements that will reflect the priorities and values of our community. So, this will be good as we move forward. Just want to reiterate that back to everyone.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you. Transition right into safety? Okay. So with the safety piece here, you know, many people do, many, many people do a lot of work behind the scenes, some of the folks that Craig mentioned, to keep our students in schools safe. And so this will be just a brief description of some of the work that goes into keeping our schools safe. And so first off is, is training and communication. All of our staff every year take part in Safe Schools Online modules. There's ongoing communication of safety procedures, staff involvement in trainings, trainings that you'll see here as we continue to move forward. Also, environmental health and safety. So we work to monitor our indoor air quality. We're continuing to try to use more and more green cleaning solutions, regular inspections of our HVAC systems, and then we also have an outdoor air quality guideline that we have kind of shaped over the last few years to put in place, so that when August and September hits and it gets a little smoky, we've got a consistent plan in place to help support our kids. Food safety as well, our food service folks who will be doing a great job for us, I know, on Friday at the, at the staff lunch. They, they keep compliance with food handling regulations, and they're doing ongoing training for food service as well. We also work on our outdoor spaces to keep those areas safe with regular inspections of playgrounds and fields, also the surfacing and equipment checks. For building safety and security, keep those exterior doors locked during school hours. We have a controlled entry system at all of our schools, as well as security cameras in the buildings. Our IT staff goes through training and cybersecurity training to help keep us safe on that end as well. With more building safety and security, do things like elevator and lift inspections, alarm and fire system inspections. There's quarterly building safety committee meetings that happen, just to make sure things are going well. And then also compliance with the LISAs law, that'll be coming up in October of '25. If you're not familiar with that, that's, that's going to be Senate Bill 5004 in Washington. It's, it's gaining traction across the country, but what it does, in a nutshell, is it aims to reduce response time during critical incidences. And we're working now with our, with our tech team and others to, to see what we need to do to make sure that we're prepared when that goes into place. And we've already got some of the things ready, but we want to do as much as we can to be, to be ready when that goes into place. Social emotional learning as well. We have integrated SEL curriculum at all of our schools. Our support staff and counselors are available for students with SEL in mind, and SEL is included in staff training and supports as well. For emergency preparedness, we do active shooter trainings for staff, first aid training for select staff, annual reviews of threat assessment protocols, regular safety drills in all of our schools, and then always review our safety handbook. Almost there. We also partner with law enforcement. We're fortunate to have a school resource officer on site, Scott Patrick. We also have and will be, and will continue to coordinate with additional law enforcement as, as necessary. And Pullman Police Department does training in our schools, usually during the summertime, to get familiar, to get their staff familiar with things and know the buildings and all that. That happens as well. We also take part in transportation safety. So there's annual Washington State Patrol inspections for all of our vehicles, our, there's drug and alcohol testing for bus drivers, and also driver training simulators as well to help keep us safe. Any questions on any of that?
Don't see any, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for keeping us safe.
All right, next, I'd like to ask Roberta Kramer up for the summer school update.
Before I start, I do just want to say to you, thank you. It has been a pleasure to serve the Pullman School District, the students, the staff, and to work alongside all of you. And I'm about to start a new chapter. Not sure what the story's going to tell, but I'm, I'm excited, and I just want you to know how proud you should be of the work that goes here, that goes on here by everyone. I could not be prouder to have had a child go to this school district, and that's how everyone should feel. Okay, with that, I'm going to talk to you briefly about summer school, and this is just summer school, like, what the plans are, no outcomes yet, because, of course, we haven't really started summer, you know. So, we're going to offer summer school at Pullman High School. And you can see that we've added and changed up, changed a few things. One of them is, there's a mandatory orientation, because one of the things that we've learned is that kids say, "Yeah, yeah, yeah, I'm on, I'm on board, I'm going to do this, I'm going to do this," and then they get into it, and they're like, "Oh, it's that much time." Yes, it is. So, it's just, and, and creating those structures that are necessary. Class sessions will go July 1st through the 21st, Tuesday through Thursday, from 10:00 until 2:00. And those will occur at Pullman High School, which is a little bit different. After COVID, we had a lot more flexibility, and again, that was resulting in less successful completion rates. It is credit recovery for core classes, and we have one teacher that then works across all those areas and helps to support students in, in all of those. In past years, my next slide would say elementary school. Our budget constraints are such that there will be no elementary school, summer school this year. Extended school year. Extended school year is designed for students who are, receive special education services, and it's all based on that individual student's data. How it's going to look this year is that it, we're going to have a preschool and elementary class at Cameac with one teacher and four paraeducators, and then a secondary class, middle school and high school, here at, at Pullman High School, with a teacher and three paraeducators. And those dates are July 14th through the 31st, Monday through Thursday. So we, we like to ensure that folks have that long weekend, if that's something that's interests them. And I'm sure that in about September, Ryan will be standing here, sharing the results of summer school. Questions?
Any questions? Oh, go ahead, Craig.
Just been asked by people in the community, why is it so expensive for, for the credit retrieval? $150 a credit?
Well, if you remember, when that came to the board a few weeks ago, they did offer a discounted rate for early registration. But part of it is the, the staff time, and it's not, we don't make money on it, we don't even break even on it, but the courses themselves, it costs us for Apex.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks for that question, Craig. Any others? All right. Looks like- Looks like you're still up, Roberta, for English language development. So please carry on.
Okay. So I just love to come and talk about the great programs that we're doing here in Pullman School District. And this is about the English language development program where we really work with our multilingual learners in improving their English skills and really focusing on that proficiency. You can see that from 2020 till now, we've grown by 22 students. You can see that in our staffing at this point, we have 2.4 teachers and essentially two paraeducators in that classified area. Expenses, we will overspend in this, just right now, this is what this shows, but our state allocation is $283,818. So far, our expenses are around the $238,000, but we will spend that before the, by the time the year runs out. And then in our Title III, which is one of the federal funds that we know are, we're not sure what's going to happen with that. While we get $40,000, we've only expended $5,151 and that's because, some of it is because we've had some other funds that have allowed us to access some professional learning. So, and we're hopeful for carryover in that federal funding. So that might, for example, might allow for some specialized GLAD training for all of our, for staff who are really interested in it. In the professional, area of professional development, we had a teacher that attended the WABE Winter Institute and also the annual conference. This year, we had a principal go to the annual conference, which was huge. Kind of again, really looking at how can we maximize our dollars and get the most out of it. And then all of our ELD teachers provided a series of GLAD trainings that were available to anyone during the school year, very well attended. I know some of the folks that are here attended, participated in that. And then in addition, we had a required session during the Learning Improvement Day where they attended the sessions on guided language acquisition development. Did I? I must be close. I'm close. So, and that was exciting. It's, and it's because it's really useful and it's meaningful for all kids, but falls within this project. We've had two very successful parent and community nights at the Family Literacy Night at Jefferson Elementary in January, and then in April, we once again had the AAPI group from the high school that hosted the cultural fair. And that used to be something that the ELD department did on their own, the staff did. Well, now, staff member is the advisor for that group, and so it's engaged a much broader audience and it's just, that's very exciting. And then alternating years, we collect information from families just to get their feedback. Oftentimes, in the past, what our, the feedback has been is, I'm not really sure what my kiddo's getting, so that's something we've really focused on. Also with the use of ParentSquare has expanded our reach much further because those, anything that we send is, can be translated. So it's great. And then finally, this has been a fascinating thing for me to watch during the nine years that I've been here, where this is just a number of languages that are represented in our program of our 172 students. But when I started, our number one language was Arabic. And now it's Spanish. And so it's just the changing times and so that is, and again, is representative of the world. And that's one of the great parts about Pullman School District. It's where the world comes to us and our kids are so fortunate to have that experience. But it's just, it's fun to unpack that and take a look at where our folks coming from. And we use other translators and interpreters from some different services that we purchase, but sometimes nothing can quite beat the sitting down and having the conversation and learning about their child because it doesn't matter where you're from. It's about, that's who you care about and that's, that's the stories we want to hear. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Craig, please.
Why are there English students in the ELD program? Twenty-seven.
Great, yes. Sometimes that's a misidentification is what we've found. Yeah.
It's not they speak, you know, British English.
Yeah, no, no. We do have that sometimes, but sometimes they identify as that and then it's the going back and kind of parsing through all of that. And a lot of families want to identify as English speakers even though they say that they speak another language in the home. And it's, they're very proud of the fact that they can speak English and we want to support that too.
Thank you, Roberta. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next is our community of belonging update. I'll start with Bob and then go to Craig. So Bob, please carry on.
No update tonight.
Okay, Craig?
I have no update.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we'll move to the public comment section of the agenda. The public comment section provides an opportunity for individuals or members of a group to address the board on educational issues. If you intend to provide public comment this evening, you may address, or you may register to speak using the sign-in sheet located near the boardroom entrance. To ensure fairness and provide for an orderly meeting, we respectfully require that individuals speak only once for a maximum of three minutes and may not transfer their speaking time to others. Please be attentive as your name will be called in the order it is listed on the sign-in sheet. To assist board members in review and consideration of your comments, we appreciate your providing a written copy of your remarks along with your email or mailing address on the sign-in sheet. When addressing the board, please approach the microphone and state your name before presenting your comments. The board will listen. Sorry, I've been sick, so I might not be able to get through this. The board will listen and may offer clarification if needed. However, the board will not engage in a discussion at this time. Depending on the nature of the topic, the board may decide to schedule it as a discussion item for a future meeting. We kindly request that all comments remain civil and respectful, and we remind you to consider the impact of your words and know that you bear personal responsibility for their content. We caution you to avoid certain statements that may infringe upon the rights of others under various laws, including those protecting privacy or prohibiting defamation. Providing public comment demonstrates your feelings of engagement and participation in decision-making processes in our community, and we thank you in advance for your public comment. And I'd like to begin with Jessica Virguts. Please come up. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Virguts-Cavignaro and I am a taxpayer, parent, and former employee of the school district. In 2019, I was hired as a clinical, licensed clinical psychologist to establish school-based mental health services in our district. Last year, I came to the hard realization that it was time for me to leave the school district as it was clear that my views on mental health matters did not align with the views of Dr. Maxwell. In my nearly five years here, school-based mental health services grew from simply me providing therapy at all six schools, yep, and starting up Greyhound Minds Matter to my creating a training site here which allowed me to clinically supervise five additional providers under my license for our school district. With this additional largely unpaid staff, we were able to expand therapy services, create our Minds Matter clubs at all six schools, and host fabulous district-wide community events. After a year of failed attempts to negotiate with Dr. Maxwell and receiving minimal support from our school board, Shay left her position here as school therapist in December 2023, and I left in May 2024 after finalizing my doctoral students' practicum here. To be clear, Pullman Public Schools has not had licensed mental health providers here since my departure last May. Having this year away, I have realized that it's not only a misalignment in our views of mental health matters, but our values regarding communication and our ability to have opposing views and rather than reacting with avoidance and defensiveness, leaning in with curiosity. Rather than seeing obstacles as challenges that stop us, truly having a growth mindset of figuring out how do we get on the other side? Rather than simply following the leader, pausing to ask clarifying questions. The past six years, I've been continually baffled by the lack of clarifying questions asked from our leadership and amazed that when our, when one school board member asks to further discuss a matter, other board members would oppose more conversation. I urge this school board to be fully present in your duties as elected representatives of our community. You are not here to simply follow the leader. You are elected to be the voice of our community and it appears over and over that many of you are failing through avoidance and defensiveness. One easy way to ask clarifying questions is to make exit interviews standard practice. This would highlight staff concerns that lead to turnover and would then allow our school district to grow and to improve. I have an example of an exit interview to share with you, and since I was not afforded the opportunity to have an exit interview and was advised to not speak last year at a school board meeting, I'm going to include my May 2024 statement for your review too.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Please, no applause until all the public comment has been stated. Thank you very much. All right, next, I'd like to ask Wendy Krueger up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You ready?
Go.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Wendy Krueger, parent, staff member, taxpayer, and voter. At the last board meeting, the assistant superintendent position was justified by claiming district staff needed to be freed up to support building level needs. Since the board approves all district level spending, you should be aware that instead of stepping in to help this year, the district leadership paid two retired administrators to step in and help fill the gaps at the building level. One Friday night football game, we were short-staffed. The district office was called for support. Our assistant superintendent agreed to come help, which we were grateful for. When she arrived, I shared that we needed help with selling tickets at the gate. The response was, I don't want to do that, so she didn't. If district leadership wants to say that they show up and help at the building level, they should show up and help where the help is needed. That should be the level of leadership that we should be able to expect and count on. I hope that is true with Mr. Mulvey moving forward on staff. I want to point out that scare tactics are being used to push hiring decisions forward, suggesting that if we continue to ask questions and seek transparency, we risk losing future applicants. It has been shared with me by an administrator in Clarkston that a year ago, he reached out to Dr. Maxwell to discuss the assistant superintendent job, and it was also shared with me that another administrator in Spokane had reached out to inquire about our then-open position. Reportedly, Dr. Maxwell did not return either of their attempts to reach out. Our current leadership benefits from making us feel isolated and dependent on them, as if no one else wants to work for us or with us. Perhaps applicants aren't deterred by our questions, but by a lack of response and openness by our leadership. Last meeting, you renewed a TBD administrator contract and coincidentally, an assistant elementary position opened to give him a role in our district. If the district was going to make a transfer like this, why wasn't it done in advance of renewing the contracts? Was a merit-based interview selection process undermined to find a role for the TBD administrator whose contract you prematurely renewed? Were the two candidates in the pool even considered? Could this be considered predetermination in hiring by our district leadership? Did we end up with the best person for the job? I leave you with this. In our elementary principal job posting, we advertised that we were looking for individuals with the desired competencies of integrity and trust. People who are widely trusted in the school community at large are seen as direct truthful individuals, presents truthful information in an appropriate and helpful manner, keeps confidence, admits mistakes, does not misrepresent themselves for personal gain, are warm and easy to approach, builds constructive and effective relationships, and uses diplomacy and tact to diffuse tense situations. If we are experiencing, expecting this from our building administrators, then this too should be expected from our district leadership. The evaluation of the board's one-on-one, our only employee tonight, should reflect his recent decision-making and treatment of our Pullman School District employees. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so second warning, please hold all applause until the end of the meeting. If you continue to applause, the public comment section of this meeting will be concluded. Thank you. Anthony Haynes, please come up.
I'm speaking tonight as an employee, a parent, and a taxpayer in the district. Let me begin with a serious concern. The April 30th board meeting showed multiple signs of violating the Open Public Meetings Act. If that's the case, then any decisions made during that meeting should be considered null and void. That matters. Showing up to these meetings is hard. Our families are juggling sports, church, homework, evening shift, dinner. People made sacrifices to attend the April 30th meeting. They showed up together, united, and yet many were shunted to the commons or an upstairs room to watch a live stream. They came to be heard, instead they were sidelined. Applause was allowed in the commons but not in the boardroom. That decision sent a message that those community members were not part of the meeting, that their presence didn't count. Now, about the elimination of the full-time athletic director position, Wendy Krueger was given only two days' notice to prepare for her appeal. The law provides three. This is not a small oversight, this is a big one, one that impacts careers, credibility, and community trust. And once again, voices weren't heard when concerns were raised about hiring a new assistant superintendent. Just a year ago, Craig Nelson suggested we could absorb that role after Roberta Kramer's retirement. Why were we pretending this was not already suggested? Board members, except Mr. Nelson and Mr. Carter, I'm asking you respectfully to step back, to think critically, to reject group think. You have a duty to act independently, to examine everything presented to you, not to take it at face value, not from Bob Maxwell, not from anyone. Trust has been eroded deeply and for a long time. Remember in 2018, Pullman Education Association issued a vote of no confidence. In response, a consultant was hired. Then the pandemic came and focus shifted, but the problems didn't go away. Last year, the PEA conducted a staff survey with a high response rate. The lowest scores, they went to the superintendent and assistant superintendent. And here we are again, still dealing with the same issues, still asking the same questions. Finally, the issue of public record requests. If you're frustrated by the volume of them, if they feel like a burden, then please ask yourself why they're happening in the first place. When leadership isn't open, when trust is lacking, people will dig for answers because they feel they have no other choice. Be open, be honest, be accountable, and you'll find fewer requests coming your way because we're your constituents and we are Pullman School District.
Don't have.
Thank you. All right, next, Allison Harris, please come up.
My name is Allison Harris and I'm a parent in the school district. I'm here today to ask you on behalf of 584 people to reconsider the decision to remove Wendy Krueger from the athletic director position at PHS. The 584 people that signed this petition on these 20 pages include parents, students, teachers, coaches, doctors, dentists, lawyers, engineers, professors, and many more from our community who agree that Wendy Krueger is a valuable asset to our district as the activities and athletic director, and we want her to remain in that role. We appreciate that Board President Roberts acknowledged the petition and responded to it. You may believe that it's too late to reverse this decision, but we do not believe that is the case. As you have heard, it is believed that the Open Public Meetings Act was violated during Wendy's appeal before the board on April 30th. And because of that violation, the results of that meeting should be null and void. That was not the only violation. According to the RCW laws that apply to Wendy's transfer, the board did not give Wendy the sufficient days' notice that was required. After Wendy notified the board of her decision to appeal, the board had to quote, notify the administrator in writing of the date, time, and place of the meeting at least three days prior there too. Wendy received written notice on the date, time, and place of her appeal via email on Monday morning, April 28th, according to the timestamp of the email. In the RCWs and the WAC, the day the written notice is given is not counted as the first day's notice. Day one would be counted on Tuesday. Day two was Wednesday, April 30th, the day of the board meeting, and day three did not occur until Thursday. This means that the board only gave Wendy two days' notice instead of the required three or more. Due to this violation, the results of the decision at Wendy's appeal are null and void, and Wendy is entitled to the appeal meeting being done over again with the proper notice. This means you have another chance to vote on this. You may feel like you're in a pickle with the recent hire of an assistant principal AD to take Wendy's place. My answer to this is that- My answer to this is that Bob Maxwell is a smart and capable man. I've seen him make difficult things happen when he wants to get something done. I believe that if you allow Wendy Krueger to redo her appeal, and if you listen to the will of the people, 584 of them, and voted to keep Wendy Krueger as the A.D., that you and Bob could work together and find a way to keep Wendy Krueger on as A.D. next year. Please give Wendy the appeal redo that she deserves due to the law being violated. Vote to undo her transfer and keep her on as A.D. That would certainly make all 584 of us who signed this petition feel heard and listened to. And I will give this to the board president.
Well, please, yeah.
There's only 20 pages, but I'll send it in an email as well.
Thank you. Okay, next, I'd like to ask Cooper Jackwish to come up.
James Madison called free communication "the only effectual guardian of every other right." He authored the First Amendment, which guarantees the right of people to peaceably assemble. When our institutions limit that without cause, we don't just bend that spirit, we break faith with it. At the April 30th board meeting, more than 100 people came to this building. Some drove from out of town, some left work early, some were students who wanted to see what civic engagement looks like. They came because someone they care about, someone they believe in, was about to lose her job. They showed up with dignity, passion, and the hope that their presence might matter. Now, I want you to imagine something different. Imagine those same 100 people showed up not to protest, but to celebrate. Maybe a student saved someone's life, or a team just won a state championship. Do we honestly believe that they'd have been turned away? Would the board have said, sorry, we only set out 40 chairs, that's what we're comfortable with tonight? Of course not. You would have found an accommodation. You would have stayed late to shake hands, you would have clapped with them. That contrast should give us all pause. Because what happened that day wasn't about fire codes or safety, it wasn't about a lack of space, it was about control. And about setting the tone for who belongs in this room and who doesn't. I watched from the commons on my phone while an impressive young lady gave an impassioned speech that drew applause, only to have that applause to quote Pullman Radio News aggressively gavelled down. She will remember that for the rest of her life. Mr. Roberts, that was embarrassing. Because the message the board sent that night was, we are the arbiters of how the community shows up for one another. We dictate how the members of this community express their right to assemble at an open public meeting, and if it's too uncomfortable for us, you can watch from the other room. I'm here tonight to offer a letter signed by members of this community, people who believe we must do better, not for political reasons, not to create division, but because public trust is fragile, and when you damage it, you have a duty to repair it. To Mr. Roberts specifically, I believe you care about this district. I also believe you have an opportunity right now to model the kind of leadership that bends and doesn't break, to say, we didn't get that one right, and we'll do better next time. I think there's wisdom in that approach, and I believe wholeheartedly it will help repair.
Twenty-second bridges.
We're not here to fight, but we're here to say we strongly disagree with your actions and decisions. And sometimes, the most powerful thing a leader can say is, I'm, I hear you, and I'm here to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Joe Harris, please come up.
Thank you, Cooper.
Perfect. Go ahead, Joe.
Thanks, Nathan. We know this fall, there's an upcoming election, and the school board's going to change. We know that's going to be some changes. But before those changes happen, you have an opportunity to set a legacy. So what kind of a board will you be known as, the 2024 to 2025 or 2023, depending on how long you've been on the board? So what kind of legacy are you going to be setting? Are you setting a legacy that you listen to parents, you listen to the community, you listen to students, you listen to the teachers, coaches, community members? You have an opportunity to make that happen. The legacy that I challenge you each to leave is to bring back Ms. Krueger. That's the legacy that you will be known as. Legacy that listens to parents, legacy that listens to students, this board, this board. You have that opportunity. By failing to act, by moving forward without actioning that, what kind of legacy will you leave? Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Next, Natalie Heron, please come up.
Hi, I'm Natalie Heron. Before starting my speech, I want to thank Mary Wallace on the forthcoming talk about the social apartheid designed by Well Place Boundaries and the busing to Jefferson and Camayac from the last meeting. As I am centered by the three minutes, let me, let me first bounce on, listen to your comment regarding the administrative spending and the percentage of administration in Lewiston from last board meeting. Lewiston is hiring more administrative personnel, which most likely means that they are hiring from the community. While the new assistant superintendent may be an excellent candidate, you look like a great person, we must not overlook the value of hiring qualified employees from within our own community. I also want to point out that we are being bombarded with data, as so if they tell the whole story. The data feels a bit like the orchestra playing on the Titanic by now. That's how it looks like. Which brings me to retaliation, and what it looks like in the Pullman School District. I can only speak about my own experience, but it's a great one. Retaliation in my case seems to begin when I spoke up two months after my younger son re-entered the district. I was met with condescendants over a Chromebook he didn't even break. Already spoken about all this. I was received by Courtney Hoag, who I love dearly, who encouraged me to speak out and clear the air about what I've entered at PSD. So I did, right? Because that's the best way to move forwards, and so on. Since then, retaliation has come in many forms. My teenage son still does not have transportation after two years. I have proved the issue three times, and nothing has been done. No one in this community has lifted a finger to help us. Okay? I have become effectively unhireable in this very district I have served with integrity, despite excellent references, years of experience, and a strong work ethics. I have been passed over repeatedly. Two years ago, position remained unsealed rather than to hire me. This spring, I wasn't even granted an interview, yet a recent high school graduate was hired instead. So I'm told. You'd have to verify that, because it's hearsay, of course. Today, I stand before you to make it known that I have been applying for the past four years. I will keep applying, so you're not getting rid of me. I live in Pullman, and it is time for me to obtain a position in the city I live in. Please stop shunning me or others that are locals and deserving of a position in town. It is time for this district to recognize and value the contributor of its local community members. Let's not continue to teach our young that people are despicable. And with that, are my last two years review for you, Bob, because I think you missed me.
Thank you.
And there's four at the HR. So we're doing great. Have a great day.
You as well. Judy Wilton, please come up.
Hi, I'm Judy, and I don't really have a speech, but I just had a question about the summer school for the $150 a course. I contacted the Alex people who do the math program that you guys have for summer school, and they said that I can get a membership, for a monthly membership of $19.99 a month, and I can have access to their whole entire program. So I'm just trying to wonder why I would have to spend $150 for my kid to get his course if he could do it from home for $19.99 a month.
Thank you for that question. We'll try to get back to you by emails. Thank you. All right, and I got your email right here, so thank you, Judy. Okay, I think that concludes our public comment this evening. Thank you all very much for giving public comment.
Just if we can get copies of those individual.
Oh, yeah, sure. Totally.
From, from that.
Okay. Next is the consent agenda. To expedite business at a board meeting, the board approves the use of a consent agenda, which includes items considered to be routine in nature. Any item which appears on the consent agenda may be removed from the agenda by any board member and voted on separately. The remaining items will be voted on by a single motion. Would anyone like to remove anything from the consent agenda this evening?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. Are there any questions on the motion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion passes. Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to action items, of which we have two. The first being Resolution 2425-10, the Declaration of Surplus Buses. And did you get that final signature?
I was gonna wait until after the presentation. At least I need to sign this.
All right, good evening again. At our last meeting, we discussed the disposal of a bus. This was in place when we, when we go through the purchase and the grant work to get an electric bus. We then have to dispose of a diesel. Since last meeting, I haven't had any questions about this. I did get a couple suggestions from you about what we could do with the diesel bus, how to destroy it, but no questions since last meeting.
I've had more ideas on that, if you want to hear them.
Later, yes, please.
All right, are there any questions?
I move approval of Resolution 2425-10, Declaration of Surplus Bus.
I second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 2425-10, the Declaration of Surplus Bus. All those, well, actually, does anyone have any questions on the motion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion passes. Thank you very much, Justin. Again, don't leave yet. Justin, on the Pioneer Center room lease.
Yes, so last time, we discussed the potential of Montessori School Pullman coming to the district office, the Pioneer Center, to lease some rooms. Through the, since, since that time, we've continued to work with them closely and try to build a potential lease, what that would look like, narrowing down what rooms they would like to use, how we'll organize everything, fencing in for the playground, all those things. We're coming together quite nicely. And since that time, we also haven't, I haven't received any questions about that discussion item.
Are there any further questions on the bus? Oh, yeah, sorry, Pioneer Center. I was still on the bus. I was thinking about how we were going to break it.
I know you are, I know you are.
Is that, sorry.
Go ahead, please.
Has that lease drafted yet, or are you still working on?
Still working on it, because we're, we're just kind of getting down to what specific rooms they would like to use and all that.
All right, any other questions? Okay. Yes, Craig, please.
Will the lease come back for our approval?
Yes.
This is just about the development.
This is, this is just to say, are we okay to continue moving forward with conversations? We'll bring the lease back when we, when we get to a good spot. Yep.
Yep. When the lease is done, then we'll bring it back for official actions.
Yep, good question, thank you.
I move approval of the Pioneer Center room lease.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the Pioneer Center room lease. Any questions on the motion? And just to clarify, as Justin just did, this is just the approval to go into a leasing negotiation, to create a lease, not the approval of a lease. I just want to clarify the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We do not have any discussion items this evening, and so we will move straight to informational items. Informational items do not require action or discussion by the board. They are included in the agenda for the board to review and may be moved to the discussion items section of the board agenda by any board member. Informational items may include board procedure updates and non-substantive policy updates. Would anyone like to remove anything from the informational items? Oakley, Oakley, we'll just move right on. Next, we will proceed into an executive or closed session. The board will recess into an executive or closed session by motion, stating how long it will last and if action will be taken. Following the executive or closed session, the board president convenes the regular meeting. How long do we need for our session this evening?
Let's start with 35 minutes and then see where we land.
Okay, I will say eight, let's do 8:15, that way we give the room time to clear out. Is that cool?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. All right. At this time, I want to thank our audience for hanging in there with us and participating, but we're going to proceed into a closed meeting at this point, so I will wish you all good evening. Thank you very much.